I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America, and still in power, for the state, our nation, under God, individual, for the election, justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I'd like to welcome the press, our visitors, and Chief Portillo. Glad you could be here with us. The next item on the agenda, changes to the agenda. Any changes?
Yes, sir.
Then we will go next. The next item that requires action is, that you are addressing is council comments. And first on the list is Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few comments. The people, or the public, there on Chihuahua Hill, on Richards Street and all that, have been telling me to tell the city thank you for the improvements that were made there. And they really liked the park and they really liked the streets. So, thank you, guys. A while back, I was getting a haircut, supposedly. Anyway, there was an issue with the guy that runs on the streets. And this guy caused a ruckus with a guy that was in a semi. It was the guy's fault that occurred from here, from Silver. It was his fault. He ran in front of the guy and the semi guy didn't see him and he didn't hit him, but he claimed that he hit him. And this guy is known to run on the streets all over the place in Silver. And that's not feasible. He's the tall, thin guy, long hair, wears shorts. Anyway, he was there pounding on the door and yelling at the guy. And he was spinning at the truck. Myself and the lady, there's my hair, and another lady down from the same building were yelling at the guy to stop it. It was his fault. And he was yelling ruckus and cussing and all that. Well, I got in touch, because I was a witness to it, I got in touch with the people from that organization. And they asked me for my opinion. And I told them that my opinion was that it was the guy's fault, not the runner. And I think that that guy should be told something about not running on the streets. It's a very dangerous situation. He had people, the drivers going by and stopping, but he was in a room. And you could hear him cussing. But anyway, I was up on Boston Hill here a couple of days ago. And it's amazing the trail that they made there. It's very, very amazing. And there's a lot of trails and they're white trails. There's a lot of people walking up there, a lot of people on bicycles also. And I talked to some of the people there and they were telling me that they were amazed to see how many trails there are in Boston Hill and how close it is and how wonderful the people are there. So, hats out to the people from the Boston Hill Trails who listen. Now, I did receive a phone call and I tried to get ahold of Chief Portillo. For some reason or another, we missed each other. But this guy has a side-by-side. And he wanted to know if he could take his son on a side-by-side. And I believe his son is about two years old. And I don't know. I didn't answer that. But I don't know. I guess it's the same thing as having a car seat? Okay. Okay.
The vehicle that you need to be following the uniform traffic code and all regulations that are for a motor vehicle on UTV. And that car seat needs to be installed and secured properly, or else he could be potentially cited for child restraint.
Okay. Thank you. I've been asked why I ran for reelection. I ran for reelection because I think that we have a very good council. And there are some things, or there's a lot of things, that some of us like and some of us don't like. But being in the council, if one person can bring up an idea or a situation, and it takes all of us up here to see if it's feasible for the public or not feasible. Also, I enjoy it. I like it. And my wife, my daughter keep pushing me to do it. So hopefully, I can stand another four years of abuse from my wife. But I think we don't, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. And, oh, one more thing. I did get a snapshot from some trash on the water tanks over the, on Boston Hill. And I went up there and there is a lot of garbage in a hole. And I did get ahold of Chief, I mean Officer Howdy. And he said he was going to look into it. Now, I walked up there the other day and of course it's all full of water, but it's still there. Just in case that somebody would complain about it. And again, Happy New Year and let's get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just have to put comments. First of all, that I will grab feedback in Silver City. I did have an emergency in November that kept me away for a while and kept me pretty sick for a few weeks. But as you can see, I'm smiling and I'm back and happy to serve the population. The other comment I have is I had two citizens ask me if the town would help them pick up one a Christmas tree and another some stuff that they had locked. And Mr. Brown is going to respond to that for me.
Basically, what we have is if, for large items or brush or for issues like that, we will come by at the request of residences in town. We'll come by up to two times a year and pick up large items. For instance, like spring cleaning, when you cut your weeds and all that type of thing, we'll go pick it up from you. I just call Public Works at 388-4640. Like I said, we'll do that twice a year. And it's designed for like spring cleaning and during the fall or whenever it might be. And then we also do pick up Christmas trees as well. And that usually is advertised in the paper. And that doesn't count towards your twice-a-year pickup. So if you can get on that schedule during that time of year, then you won't have to give us a call. We'll just drive by and pick it up for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, Happy New Year and Happy New Decade. I'm one of those people that believes that decade begins now, rather than at the end of the year. I wanted to say that I'm really happy to have Counselor Aiman Smith back. I'm happy that everybody seems to be healthy up here at the council meeting today and no one has the flu. So, it's a big deal right now in New Mexico is the flu is really hitting the state pretty hard. So, I know that they're trying to encourage folks to please, if you haven't received the flu shot, to still get it now because the season is far from over, apparently. So, I also wanted to talk about, just briefly, about my trip to the Women's White House Municipal Electoral Leaders Conference. It was held on December 12th in DC on the White House grounds in the old Eisenhower Building. And 76 women from 29 states attended the conference. So we had three panels where we were able to ask a variety of questions. Of course, it was restricted, you know, who they asked. And we also had visits by the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, the Chief of that Office, or if you want to call the Director, and then Secretary DeVos, Secretary Elaine Chow. And I asked two questions. I was selected twice for two different folks. And for the life of me, I forgot to write down the first one. It was the Deputy of the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. I asked about opportunity zones. And if there would be an availability through Congress in the future to be able to have those opportunity zones redrawn by the sitting governor of the state. And the deputy was really clear about the fact that those opportunity zones would be able, that there's movement afoot in Congress, that they can do it in two years. So, two years from this year. Where they can revisit it and ask for those to be redrawn. So it would help communities like Raton, New Mexico, which is basically their main street, right down the middle of it, one half, 300 properties. It's not included in the property zone and in the opportunity zone and the other part is it. And then, of course, we have our area, which encompasses Visite de Plata, right? And then the southern part of town, is that correct?
Yes, the southern and southeastern part of, a little bit north of, well, that side of Brewer Hill. Brewer Hill and all the southern part.
Okay. So, and I think, and then there's apparently one spot on the east side of the state where it's literally in the middle of nowhere, not even next to a paved road, that has been deemed an opportunity zone. So it's looking and making sure that rural communities are whole, that they're included throughout it, not just a fraction of that community. So that all of our communities, you know, that are really placed are going to have those same opportunities. So I think that's something to think about. I know that when we, I talked, I got to ask that same question to the Deputy for Economic Development, I can't remember his name. And he said, "Oh, no, we can never touch it, maybe in 10 years." So, I know from talking with some of the, our federal reps, that the fact that we can do it in two years is more appropriate. And I know that the Municipal League is actively trying to make sure that our legislators think about that. And I think that the National League of Cities is pushing for that as well, because the same things happen. And I would tell you, in that room were people from rural communities that were small and from huge, you know, like Fort Worth, you know, with huge populations. And all of the issues we talked about, we're all facing. They're all the same. And it was a completely nonpartisan discussion. And people were really engaged. So I really appreciated it. Gave me a lot of hope that if we continue conversations like this with a variety of leaders, that at some point we might come to something where those leaders will understand that healthy municipalities make a healthy state and healthy states make a healthy nation. So it's really important to me. The other question I did get, it wasn't really a question, but more as a thank you to Secretary Elaine Chow about having the EAS, the Essential Air Services that we have, and how important that is to the economy of our area. I kind of got the impression that she may not be a big fan of it, but there were a lot of rural communities in the room that were a big fan of it. But I thanked her for the fact that that has continued and we want to make sure that that continues. And so some other folks took up some other topics like CDBG money, felonious money, things like that. So it was overall a really great conversation and I was glad that I was able to attend that. The, let me see. So I wanted to mention that I need to check with the Assistant Town Manager, but I think the new painted crossings that we did on Yucca Street near 23rd seem to be working, but they're already fading. And I've already had a couple residents point that out. So I think that's where we have to kind of revisit the way the, I mean, our roads are surfaced a certain way, there's a lot of traffic on our streets, and I know that paint does not last very long here. So I'm just wondering if there's some way to encourage the people that produce the paint that we use for the sidewalks and for, I mean, for the crosswalks and things like that, if they really could look at testing it in the harsh, in Silver City, not just over on the east coast, which is where they currently test it. So I know that that's something that I would maybe like to see us work together as a town and send a letter saying, "We encourage you to use Silver City as a test spot for whether or not your paint that you use on roads is actually going to stay for longer than two months." You know? This is just a suggestion. Just, I mean, you can always ask, right? So, it doesn't hurt to ask. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, like Counselor Ray, I mean, I enjoy serving the town and the residents that have given me so much. This has become my home. It was my home when I knew that I came here way back in 1981. I knew this would be my home eventually. And over the years, I've just received so much love and I'm not going to get all teary-eyed. That's the reason why I serve on this council. I want to give back to the community that's given me so much. And while the election may not be opposed, I want to let everyone know District One, since within like, you know, a two-block radius, there are six new families that live in the two-block radius of where I live. I am going to do everything I can possibly to walk the district and introduce myself to folks. I want people to know who I am. I want to know what issues are of concern to new residents that may be there for the last year, maybe even, you know, three weeks. So I will be doing that. And I want to encourage residents to please let me know. And please vote. If it's uncontested, we still would like you to vote and exercise your right to vote. So I would just say, please exercise your right to vote. This is a big election year with a number of elections coming up after the municipal months, the primary and the generals. So please exercise your right to vote. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Connaught.
First, like everyone else said, Happy New Year. I would just like to thank the people of District Four for being very patient with me this past month. I had some personal stuff going on and that has seemed to settle down a little bit. So now I'm back to my normal schedule, although this session is going to start and a bunch of us will be out of town a lot. But for the most part, now if someone needs to meet with me or whatever, I should be available. Thank you to those of you who knew what the situation was and sent thoughts and prayers and helped a lot with that. I appreciate it. And the other thing I just wanted to mention was, sometimes we work on different projects and we get to know people in the community who help us with those projects and who work really hard. And over the past year and a half or so, we have all been meeting with a woman who felt very strongly about bees. And she was the president of the local Beekeepers Association for a while. And she passed away in December. So I just wanted to acknowledge Susan Claire and all the work that she did putting, trying to help with Counsel, 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 Aiman Smith's resolution and ordinance. So I just wanted to mention her, because she did a lot for us. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? I would just like to announce that the next Monday with the mayor will be this coming Monday, January 20th, 2020. And it's going to be at the Jumping Cactus. So you can come by anytime between 8:00 and 11:00 in the morning and talk about ideas that you might have to make Silver City even better than it already is. And the coffee or water or the soda is on me. Thank you. The next item is six, approval of the minutes of the November 26, 2019 regular meeting. Counselor Aiman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town Silver City of November 26, 2019.
Is there a second? Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, a second to the motion stated.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public input, but no one signed up, so we'll go directly to number eight, which is reports. Mr. Brown?
The only report is from, the only report is from the chief. Oh, wait. Yes, go ahead, you first and then I'll, to next.
Mayor, Council, I know you had requested some data as far as code enforcement, so I was able to go through our system and gather some data for the year 2019 in relation to code enforcement. The total calls for service that were actually called in through dispatch that we had for all of 2019 were 26. The self-initiated calls for service that the officer, well, actually Officer Howdy was proactive on, was 68. So a total of 94. So we saw some progress within last year, having a conversation with Officer Howdy, who was not able to make it tonight. But he was very successful in getting the majority of the public to come into compliance before actually having to cite an individual. The total citations that he actually did issue for the whole year that had to do with code enforcement, this is not uncover loads on code enforcement, had to do with their yards, weeds, structures, 10 citations. So he's doing a very good job. Also alongside a reminder, he works with our animal control officer, Tony, who's actually also working with him, getting people into compliance. They're consistent with 14-day notices, working hand-in-hand, going to various calls, being proactive out there. As far as uncover load citations go, there's been a total in 2019 issued of 28. That's total citations in comparison to 2018, which is only eight. There was approximately 10 businesses that weren't up to date with licensing, fire inspection. Officer Howdy worked with Deputy Chief Marshall also, and were able to get those businesses into compliance. So they're staying on top of those as far as, and also with the fire inspections. Other than that, you have any questions for me?
Any comments? Counselor Edison?
More comments, I think, than a question, Chief. And that is the opportunities I've had to interact with Officer Howdy. He sees his job, I think, as community education, rather than citation, is the first thing. So, you know, could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes. That's the main goal. I mean, even before the police department took over the codes division, that was always been the goal. And the mindset is to get the public educated and into compliance. So we continue that direction when we took over codes and continue that to get them to compliance. If it comes down to a citation of 14-day notices, then they get a citation. But we haven't had to do all of that, which tells me that we're, the public's getting educated, they're coming to compliance, and they're doing what they need to do.
It's happy.
Counselor Edison?
I just have a quick question. Can you send that to us so that we have what you just read off? Because my pen was flying, but I'm pretty sure I missed things.
Yes. I can email the data.
Yeah, if you email it to Ann, she will. Thank you.
No problem.
Do you happen to know how many uncover your load citations there were that was, that was basically forgiven because they bought the tarp? Do you have that info?
I don't have, I don't have accurate data as far as that goes.
Because I think that is part of an educational system too. Rather than just find people and send them to court, give them a chance to take care of the issue.
Mayor, I can remember that. From the landfill side of it, they initially purchased 10. I believe, they told me that they actually sold six of those for the, to forgive the citation. They ended up, well, they sold, we initially purchased 10 just as a test, tarps. They sold those out within the first, I think, first month, because we had a lot of people actually just buying them, to buy them down there. So we, we've sold, I believe, there's 18 last year, they sold tarps. Six of those were for citations.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
If you have some.
Yes, Mayor, Councilors and the public, I wanted to announce our candidates for our upcoming election. Today was write-in candidate day and nobody filed. The week before was Declaration of Candidity Day, and we had two people file. And they were Cynthia Ann Madison for Counselor in District One and Jose A. Ray Jr. for Counselor in District Three. So both races are uncontested. More info, the early voting and absentee voting start on February 4th at City Hall. And the last day for early voting, this is new, it's Saturday, February 29th, at City Hall. So we've never had that before. But we'll be open Saturday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then Election Day is March 3rd. The voting place is the Women's Club from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I'll give this information periodically, between now and March 3rd. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Edison?
So, it was announced by someone who wanted to know how, they're like really busy, they're in and out of town, they want to know how to get an absentee ballot. Do they need to call you, which is what I suggested, and have them send the request, right?
They can call me, give me their name and address, and I will send them an absentee ballot application. So that goes out first. They fill that out, they return it back to me. I verify they're a qualified elector with the county clerk's office, and I send out the ballot. I can't do that until February 4th. They can call me now, but I cannot mail a ballot out to them until February 4th.
But if someone, if they're, if it's, let's say it's an immediate family member, they can go pick up the application?
They can pick up an application.
Okay.
Ballots don't leave City Hall unless they're in the mail or the actual person comes to City Hall. Right then, if they complete the ballot, we go in the ballot box. But that starts on February 4th.
Okay. Just trying to make sure that I've got it straight, so if I get asked again, I should make sure that I follow. But I've always said, and I just, I think it's really important, people need to know, if you ever have any questions about elections, call our clerk, because she knows it all. Backwards, forwards, upside down, all the way around. So, thank you, Ann.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next item under new business. A is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2020-01, Open Meetings. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, this is our annual open meetings resolution that discusses how we comply with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. It lists our, where we give notices, the various public buildings where we give notices. We also notice, give meeting notices in the newspaper. It talks about our second and fourth Tuesday calendar dates of each month where we have our regular meetings, because those are subject to change. It talks about special meetings and emergency meetings and other meetings and closed meetings. Our boards and committees also follow, boards, committees, groups and commissions also follow the open meetings resolution and the Open Meetings Act. So it's the same as it is every year, we just update the dates. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
One comment.
Counselor Aiman Smith?
I have one comment, and that is that, this has been asked of me before, even though we have a variety of community advisory groups, we request that they, or we mandate that they also follow the Open Meetings Act, even though that they are not decision-making groups or policy-setting groups. That's correct. For transparency and consistency. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council Connaught, you have the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution Number 2020-01, open meetings.
We have a motion, is there a second? Council Ray?
Thank you, I'll second his read.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Amon Smith?
Aye.
Council Bedison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2020-02, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and for the municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
When Council Connaught, as you know, every quarter, we have to submit a quarterly report, and along with that, we have to do our budget adjustments, or our temporary budget adjustments. And today, we have both a regular budget adjustment and a temporary budget adjustment coming in the next item. But today, we're asking that you approve the budget adjustment, transferring $33,000 from the water sewer fund to the pool to payroll fund. Pool payroll fund is a clearing fund where all the payroll is transferred in temporarily and then transferred out when it's paid out, to the, whether it be to the employee or to, for instance, your income tax or your deductions, any of those, everything goes into that fund and then is transferred out. Over the last 15 years, we've built up a balance in there that we need to clear, and that's what we're doing today.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Council Amon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve of Resolution Number 2020-02, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and for the municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion, Stephen.
Council Edison, thank you. Any, any comments or discussion from the councilor? Roll call, please, Ms. Mackey.
Council Bedison?
Aye.
Council Amon Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, under item 11C, is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2020-03, a resolution temporarily amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
No, no, this is a temporary transfer for that quarterly report. And the reason this one is only a temporary transfer is because the street maintenance fund does receive gas tax revenue, proceeds tax revenue, and profit tax revenue. The reason that it's, it's got a negative balance is because of the chip seal project, the big project that we have every year that's paid directly out of that fund. And we feel that we will have, our balance will, will not be a negative balance by the end of the fiscal year, so that's why we're only asking for a negative transfer, I mean, a temporary transfer right now.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of Resolution Number 2020-03, a resolution temporarily amending approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, for municipal purposes, purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No.
Council Amon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion, Stephen.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion from the councilor?
Yes, sir.
There'd be none. A roll call, Ms. Mackey.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Amon Smith?
Aye.
Council Bedison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is 11D, the appointment to the municipal museum community advisory group. The town received an application from Rebecca Nelson to serve on the museum community advisory group. The museum director and the president of the museum advisory group recommended Ms. Nelson's appointment. If there are no objections, I would like to appoint her.
No objection.
No objection. Here are no objections, she is hereby appointed. The next agenda item is 11E, discussion and vote to reschedule the January 28, 2020 regular council meeting to January 23, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. As, as almost an annual occurrence, the reason we're asking for this change is because the Grant County Day is actually on January 29th, and it begins probably at 8:00 in the morning. Everyone gathers about 7:30 at the roundhouse. And then, on January 28th is when Prospectors has logistics meeting for everyone that's attending. And January 28th led to be our council meeting. So, I move to reschedule the January 28, 2020, regular council meeting to Thursday, January 23, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Council Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion, Stephen.
Got a motion and a second? Any further comments or discussion? Council Edison?
I just want to briefly say that the majority of the council will be attending, and I'm going to, hopefully, Council Ray will be in the honor guard.
Okay.
And I can tell you that the mayor will be giving the, what's called?
Opening prayer.
Opening prayer in the House on January 29th. And I always appreciate the fact that Council Connaught is there every year, an active participant. So, it seems like, I would just tell you, that there are going to be a lot of people up there this year, because by over 25 rooms, we had, Prospectors had reserved a certain number of block of rooms, over 20. They, it's more than we've ever had reserved, and it's more than what we, by 25 or more than that, that we have reserved. So, there'll be a lot of folks up there. And if you are interested in coming to Prospectors, to Grant County Day, may I recommend that you attend, something that none of us will be able to attend, is the January 23rd at 5:30 p.m. kickoff at the Toad. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Like to thank everybody for being here tonight, and this concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Council Ray?
I have, I have one more comment if I may. There was an article in Daily Press here a couple of days ago, and it included the coach for Silver High Racing Team and some of the guys that were in trouble. And I thought that Daily Press did a very, very outstanding job on that. And this is something that needs to be shown to people, that kids that have problems can always turn to sports. And, and there's coaches in there that will, that will help you out. And with that, I'm moving to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you, Council Amon Smith. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we're hereby adjourned.
Thank you.